Chairman.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Thursday, November 19, 2020, 6 o'clock PM. Remote meeting of the Auburn zoning board of appeals. As I am doing at home, if anyone has any electronic devices nearby, I'm putting my phone down to silent or vibrate. If you can do the same, please, as I begin the process here. So, as you know, we have a pretty busy agenda this evening, so I'm going to try to move right along. If you are just tuning in, you can join us by remote meeting participation by calling 1-646-749-3112 and entering the access code of 944571349. Or you can go on your computer and go globalgotomeeting.com, join at 944571349. Okay, so I'm getting a lot of feedback from someone here already. Can we check mics? Okay, um, thank you for whoever silenced that, I appreciate it. Um, okay, so I'm gonna start reading my script. This is the remote participation script for the zoning board of appeals to confirm member access. As a preliminary matter, my name is Robert Tatero. I am the chair of the Auburn zoning board of appeals. In order to reduce background noise, I'm going to ask that you all please mute your phones at this time and only unmute if you want to speak. Permit me to confirm that all the members of the boards and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Vice Chair Michael Maron?
Affirmative.
Good evening, sir. Larry Chacolo?
Here.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Cussy? Thank you, sir. Ms. Roach? Ms. Roach?
Here.
Oh, hi, thank you, okay. That's okay. That's why we go through this to make sure we're all, you know, clicking the same buttons. Uh, Mr. Jones?
All right.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Bush?
I'm here.
Excellent, thank you. So, uh, all of the town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, if you are present, please respond in the affirmative. Building Commissioner Kayla Moody?
Here.
DDIS Director Darlene Coyle?
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. DPW Director William Coyle?
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you, sir. So, we're gonna go on to the introduction of the remote meeting rules, so good evening. This open meeting of the town of Auburn zoning board of appeals for Thursday, November 19, 2020, now called the order at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend the public gatherings and, as such, the governor's orders suspend the requirements of the open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical locations. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to encourage, allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, to which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting on the town's website, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the zoning board of appeals is convened by remote participation from the public only. Although some staff may be physically located in the selectmen's meeting room to town hall, those town employees are practicing social distancing in accordance with the governor's orders. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, again, please call 1-646-749-3112. You can enter the access code 944571349. Or the public can join via computer at gotomeeting.com and join the meeting, 944571349. The remote access information has also been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the urban cable television and will at some point in the very near future become available on the town's YouTube channel as well for rebroadcast. Accordingly, those meeting, uh, members of the zoning board of appeals, employees and members of the public who participate, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you may broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting materials, all supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, please permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct and communication for our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Robert Tatero, will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. The chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold your name until called. Please know to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. After members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to, identify their name, or wish to speak to identify their address and address only. Once the chair has listed all public comments, commentators, I will call each one by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. If we have any technical difficulties, which so far so good we have really not, uh, we will suspend the meeting while attempts are made to correct it and also make sure that, uh, keeping accurate minutes, noting any discon, uh, disconnections or reconnections for the members. So, with that being said, uh, do I have a motion to open the November 19, 2020, 6:00 PM meeting of the Auburn zoning board of appeals?
Yes, Chairman Michael Maron, I'll make a motion to open the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Cus, uh, Mr. Chacolo, excuse me. Mr. Cussy, what do you say, sir?
Open, yep.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Roach?
Approve.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, yes? Caleb Bush?
Yes.
Great, I know it's a, I know it's a, kinda seems like a trivial point to get going, but actually, the beginning of a meeting kinda helps us all get in that rhythm so we can activate our mics, so we have to say, and kinda go back to a mute. So, anyway, the 6:00 PM applicant, Mr. Sean Goodrich, requesting a variance on the section 5.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw to have a shed three feet from the front line on a property located at 30 Hill Street, Auburn, Mass., map 71 parcel 16, is the applicant present?
Yes.
Great, thank you, Mr. Goodrich. Do we have any abutters present that may be interested in this meeting before I allow Mr. Goodrich to speak, if you want to identify yourself? Hello? All right, so I'm just gonna open mic. Okay, so I'm gonna assume that means we do not have any abutters present for this hearing, at least for the time being, but I will check back. All right, uh, Mr. Goodrich, if you could, um, go over what your requests offer the board, please, sir, and then I'll turn it over for questions.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I have never spoken publicly before tonight, so I've written down a statement I would like to read. I'm asking the board for a variance to the 10-foot setback requirements the town has established. I understand I need to address specific issues. The first is the topography. I sent in pictures prior to the meeting so you could see the property. As you can see, the drop off is significant. If I were to move the shed over to meet the requirements, I would not be on level ground, and it would be a safety risk. My driveway is at street level, and my house sits in what we call a hole. That's how much of a drop off it is. I have brought in some fill and dirt, but it would be too hard and too expensive to try to build up the area any more than I already have. The second issue is, I'd like to address is a financial hardship. My house has no garage or shed. I have been lucky to have my parents live across the street from me. Since I bought my house 10 years ago, I've been able to use their garage, their shed, their snow and lawn equipment to store everything I need. They have recently listed their house for sale, and I am scrambling to prepare for the winter. I could not rent, I could rent a storage shed for some stuff, but it would not make sense to have snow and ice removal equipment miles from my home. My job does not require, does not have the option to work from home. Therefore, I need to be able to clear my way out during the winter months. This location is the only practical and safe option on my lot. I would also like to say I believe the shed will be zero detriment to the neighborhood. This is a very high-quality, professionally pre-built shed that I would consider a betterment. I have a good relationship with all my neighbors. I have spoken with both of my direct abutters, and there is no abutter opposition from anyone. In conclusion, I would like to say I believe this is my only safe and logical option. Thank you for your time.
Excellent, okay, so before I turn it over, Mr. Goodrich, I have to say, for somebody who has not spoken in a meeting publicly before, you did a very nice, clear and concise, uh, presentation, and it would make our decision-making process much easier if people came as prepared as you did, so thank you very much, I do appreciate that. And with that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to Vice Chair Maron. Uh, if you have any questions or comments of the applicant, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Goodrich, so, um, I understand that this is a shed unit, not a garage, is that correct, sir?
Yes, it's a 12-by-24 shed.
Okay, and so, the rendering that we're, we're seeing, um, I believe it may be Caleb that, that's showing the screenshot, is this the unit itself that you intend to erect?
Yes.
Okay, so, so just for the record, I mean, it, it appears, just wanting to say the obvious, it appears that that's a garage door in the face of that unit, so could you just describe the utility of, um, what you might be storing in there?
It's kind of just pretty normal things that a homeowner would have in, in a shed, a lawnmower, a snow blower, stuff, stuff like that.
Okay. And thank you, and so, just, and the premise of my question is, is that you're not, you're not looking to store a vehicle in this unit?
No, I'm not.
Okay, very good. Um, if, if we could, um, scroll back, I know, uh, is it Building Commissioner that's running through the pictures for us thoughtfully?
Ms. Coyle has control of that.
I'm sorry. Okay, so, Ms. Coyle, if I may, could you stop at this picture itself, um, that, the picture showing the topography, this one here? So, it's kind of a side view, I believe, um, if we could flip it one more, yeah, this, this view right here. So, I did have an opportunity, um, for, um, consideration of my fellow board members, I had an opportunity to view the property. Um, I would say, in my view, um, that this, this picture specifically, um, shares, so your intention, the white spot in the northern corner of the, of the northern western corner of the picture we're seeing, that's gravel, is that correct?
Yes, that's crushed stone.
Crushed stone, and so that, that's your intended spot for, for where the shed would land?
Yes.
Okay, and, and this, this is the slope that you spoke to specifically on the topography level, um, that I, that I would attest is, is quite dramatic. This picture, in my view, doesn't actually do justice to how dramatic this drop is?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions at this time, I'll reserve for other board members or any abutters. Thank you, sir.
Excellent, thank you. So, since you mentioned that before I turn it over, um, do we have any abutters that have signed in since? I just wanna make sure we give everyone their opportunities, so hearing none, seeing none, I'm gonna move on. Mr. Cussy, do you have any questions or concerns from the applicant?
Yes, I, um, I viewed the lot today, the site where the, um, shed is gonna be placed, and it, it definitely looks like that's the only option he has, uh, to place the shed. I mean, there's, there's a drop off that's really drastic, yeah, so it, it looks like that's his only option.
I would agree, but I'll hold remarks, um, if that's all, Mr. Chacolo, do you have any concerns or questions, sir?
Oh, I have a comment for you, though. Um, being, and, and it refers to, uh, a comment of yours, the last meeting we had on variances, um, that you you kinda know how I am on a variance. Um, this should be probably one of the easiest ones for me to, uh, be in line with and, and to approve, um, as there is no doubt as to the opening into the second and third, uh, requirements because of the topography. Um, there is no doubt about that, and, and therefore, it's an easy one, uh, for me.
Excellent, thank you for those comments, sir. Um, Ms. Roach?
Um, no questions for me, I'd agree that I think it, it meets the requirements of what we need to meet, um, for a variance. That's all.
Right, okay, I would agree, and, and with all due respect to Mr. Jones and Ms. Bush, we do have, um, for this particular hearing, a full voting member of the board, so we're gonna refrain from having your comment. It seems like a pretty easy one. Uh, I would agree, I actually drove by the property again today as well to make sure. Um, and one thing I think to add is that with all the requirements being met for the variance, it's also gonna give them some relief with the trees down there of the, um, you know, the, the view through the trees of the parking lot and barroom parking lot below as well. So, you know, just for that, you know, I just wanted to add that also. We're not only just giving them relief on the requirement to the variance, it's also partially for the view, too. Um, so with that being said, if I have no other abutters that have signed on, okay, so do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Mr. Chairman Michael Maron, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chacolo. Mr. Cussy?
Yes, close.
Thank you, Ms. Roach?
Yes, close.
Thank you, and I also vote to close. Do we have any discussion on the 6:00 PM application, uh, for the variance, uh, for the property located at 30 Hill Street, Auburn, Mass.?
Mr. Chairman, uh, Michael Maron, I would, I would, um, frankly make a motion, based on, uh, the comments that the board has already shared as we've gone around the table, um, and, um, I would echo your thoughtful comments of the applicant. I think he did an excellent job of presenting statements in a brief on what he's trying to accomplish, um, and I would also agree. Um, and we typically litigiously go through our variance, uh, tenants and, um, and make sure that all of the tiers is satisfied, but I think, um, as this has been presented, um, this is a pretty easy one to understand. And so, I would, I would succinctly conclude with making a motion to approve with standard conditions.
It's okay, I have a second, Mr. Chacolo. Do I have a vote for Mr. Cussy?
Yep, grant.
Thank you, a vote for Ms. Roach?
I'd vote to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Roach, and I vote to approve as well. Um, congratulations, Mr. Goodrich, good luck. Uh, I'm sure you can be in contact with Caleb in the not-too-distant future, and, uh, as, you know, you get your, all your required paperwork squared away.
Thank you very much.
All right, good luck, thank you. So, we'll give them a minute to clear, and, uh, we'll start the 6:05 very shortly, so for those people that are ready for, getting ready for the 6:05, we're gonna give you about a minute. Maybe a little less. Okay, while people are setting up here, I'll go ahead and start at least reading what we have. So, for the 6:05, we have an applicant, Pamela, and I apologize if I make, uh, mispronounce last names. Pamela Rivera and Sanjo Ramos requesting a special permit under section 3.9.1.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaw to have home occupation use on property located at 107 Elm Street, Auburn, Mass., map 64, excuse me, parcel 09. Are the applicants present?
Present.
Present. Okay, thank you. Uh, do I have a motion to open the 6:05 hearing?
Motion to open 6:05 hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chacolo, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Maron, Mr. Cussy?
Open.
Thank you, Ms. Roach?
All right, approved.
Thank you, and I approve, okay. So, um, Ms. Rivera and Mr. Ramos, if you could just go over what you're looking to accomplish, and kind of give us a description, and, uh, follow along with your permit application, and then, uh, we'll check for abutters and we'll turn it over to the board.
Um, thank you. So, my name is Pamela Rivera, um, recently purchased our home here at 107 Elm Street, um, in January of this year, so we are happy to be new residents of Auburn, Massachusetts. Uh, thanks for having us. This is our first, um, meeting with the board, um, but basically, my husband and I are looking to start an online dealership where we would, um, not be storing any house, any cars here, um, at the property. We wouldn't be, um, we wouldn't be housing any temporarily or anything like that. Um, it would basically be used as our home office. Um, we would meet with our clients remotely, um, either through a Zoom meeting, um, or at a restaurant, and, um, find their cars through auctions or through, um, other, um, car dealers, um, and then make, send the, the cars directly to a mechanic, and then a, um, a, a car detailer, and then directly delivered to the customer, so we wouldn't have, like I said, any, um, situation where the cars would be housed here at all. Um, and then, so I think that's about it, um, and then if you guys have any questions.
Okay, uh, well, let me, before we get started, do we have any abutters present? For the 6:05? Okay, uh, I'll do a five second, four, three, two, one, hearing none, seeing none? Um, I'm turning it over to the vice chair, Mr. Maron, do you have any questions or concerns of the applicant, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so, just, um, just for clarity's sake, um, no customers on site, um, no vehicles on site. Um, help me understand how you would, um, in a transaction, uh, transfer the vehicle to a new owner?
Hi, so this is Sanjo speaking. Um, so with the transaction, what we would do is, um, we have a detail guy and a mechanic, so we would pick up the car, uh, from the auction or from the site of purchase and take it directly to the mechanic, um, drop it off at the lot. He, um, will go through the car, and then he will sanitize the car and detail the car. From there, I pick it up and I take it to, I would schedule with the customer, take it directly to either his work or his house.
Okay, so, um, for the record, I mean, no, no vehicles on site, all of your property, um, activity, um, that you're asking for succinctly is, is, uh, conducted inside the home. Do you plan to have any signage, um, or any, um, I mean, I know you addressed this, but again, for the record, you're not gonna have any customers come to your home, it's gonna be, um, it's gonna be just a remote office-type activity. Uh, so any signage that you're planning?
No, no, no signage.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, I, I'll reserve, I don't have any additional questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chacolo?
Uh, yes. Um, to the petitioner, you have mentioned that you would be buying cars at an auction. It's my understanding that if you buy a car at an auction, through my experience myself, that you have to be a licensed dealer. Are you a licensed dealer?
That's what we're trying to accomplish. Um, we were looking into all the different scenarios, and, uh, it started off with starting here.
I'm sorry, you'll have to repeat that, please?
So, this is, uh, the first step for me to become a dealership. Um, it would be, like I said, it would be an at-home dealership, an online dealership, kinda like Carvana. Um, but this is the first step for me in order to, to get the dealer's license.
So, you will be applying to the board of selectmen for a dealership license?
Yes.
And the address of that dealership license will be where?
107 Elm Street.
Okay, um. No further questions at this time?
Okay, thank you, sir, Mr. Cussy?
I have no questions at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Roach?
I don't have any questions at this time either.
Okay, um, so I do have a few of the applicant. Being familiar with this process myself, um, I am not a car dealer, but I have been in closely related to the automotive industry for a long time. So, if you purchase a car at the auction and you bring it to the, um, local mechanic, or the mechanic be your choice, or the dealer, the auto detailer be your choice, and then there's no guarantee you'll be able to buy it, what do you do with that car until you have it online long enough to acquire a buyer?
So, that's, that's like the beauty of it, um, is we, we actually only search for the car after I've already spoke to the customer and gotten, you know, uh, what car he wants, and I've already sent him a picture of the car, and he's approved the car. So, I wouldn't buy any cars to, um, to store and then like, uh, put online. The cars would be, um, the person would tell me that they want a car, get a contract, and then deliver the car.
So, you're act, now, okay, so I think this is kind of an important point to the board here. So, and, and to me, actually, I find this interesting as well. So, your intention is to not buy inventory first? Your intention is to, so if I come to you and, uh, and I, I contract with your services similar to a real estate agent, let's say, and I, instead of a house, I have you finding me a car? You know, if I say to you, I want a 55 Mustang with 75,000 miles, that's gonna be your request until you find one, is that how it works?
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Find with a car finder.
So, yeah, no, I, I understand that. So, you're, you're choosing, you're, you're engaging a contractor with the client before the car is purchased, then the car is purchased with the agreed upon price, and then you move it through your pipeline, so to speak?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, so I think that's important, an important point of clarification, because, um, you know, it, it's one thing to have the ability to do that, I think, with the, with the way things work these days versus how it was 10 years ago, where you would acquire the car first, and that's often the, uh, person with the seat, so to speak.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so with that being said, I'm gonna go back around, I noticed a couple of people signed in, so, um, do I have any abutters present that are interested in the 6:05 hearing? Okay, five, four, three, two, one, hearing none, seeing none? Would you go around the board one more time, Mr. Maron, sir?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any additional questions of the applicant. Um, I have a couple of thoughts if the application does move forward, um, relative to conditions, uh, but I'll, I'll reserve that for when we close the public hearing, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Cussy?
No questions, boss, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chacolo?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I noticed in the, um, in the write-up of it, Caleb had mentioned that his feeling was that it did not meet the definition of a home occupation. I would like to ask of Caleb, what did not meet, what in the application or in the distribution it was that he based that judgment on?
I defer to you, sir?
Through the chair, thank you, Mr. Chacolo. I have a couple of questions for the applicant that might help answer that question, if I could.
Sure.
Um, first question is,
Absolutely.
How are you transporting these cars? Do you plan to apply for a, for a dealer plate?
Yes, we, we, we apply for the dealer plate.
And what would be the address that you would give the state in order to receive that dealer plate?
It would be the home address.
And that address is the location that you're telling the state that you're storing vehicles, correct, to receive that dealer plate?
So, the, if they asked me where I'd store them, I would explain to them the same situation, um, because I wouldn't be storing any cars here, per se?
Okay, so through the chair, to answer Mr. Chacolo's question, my issue with this application is we have a residential address being used to license a car dealer. It's a recipe for, recipe for complaints.
All right, thank you, Caleb. Um, no further questions at this time, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Um, I'm not sure if I actually asked you the second time around, Mr. Cussy, do you have any help to add, or did I already hit you?
You already hit me, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Roach?
I don't have any questions at this time either.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and say that, you know, based on my experience with, um, uh, So, I'm going to go ahead and say that, you know, based on my experience, what building commissioners alluded to is that the requirements of, even if we issue the special permit, the requirements to acquire a dealership license through the selectmen and through the state regulations would not meet the standards or thresholds that this couple are asking for. So, if we can, if it's voted to move forward, that's all well and good, but I can tell you that it's very highly unlikely that the selectmen would vote to approve a car dealership license on a private property, as Mr. Moody stated. It's, and it's not because it couldn't work, it's because the state regulations and all those types of other requirements and application processes just haven't caught up with that type of activity yet. So, with that being said, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chikolo. Mr. Cuzzi?
Close the hearing.
Okay. Ms. Roach?
I'll also vote to close the hearing.
Yeah, thank you, and I vote to close. So, with that being said, we have no more public comment available right now, so I'm going to turn it over to Vice Chairman Maron and ask for your thoughts that you had mentioned earlier, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was inclined to spell out a couple of conditions based on the activity that's been progressed by the applicant, but frankly, in light of discovery to the building commissioner and, as stated, the challenge with Massachusetts, the way that application would read based on registering his home address to this business, I can't see a path to support this applicant.
Okay. I appreciate that. Ms. Cuzzi?
Yeah, I have nothing, Bob. It doesn't sound just like it'll work, so.
Yeah, okay. I appreciate that. Mr. Chikolo?
I have nothing further at this time. Just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, you are not calling for a vote at this time, correct?
No, I'm just, right now, we have a closure of the public hearing, and I'm asking for any additional thoughts or comments from the board. I'm going to make sure that we have no butters present before we move forward with that type of activity.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Roach?
I think I would have to agree. I hope I'm not speaking out of turn and saying, I think the request to us is a little premature. Go get your other ducks in a row and, you know, I'd consider, but they need selectmen, they need a dealer license, they need, so I feel I'm also not inclined to allow this.
Right. And, you know, I actually thought about as well, I do appreciate those comments, by the way, because that's kind of where I am on this topic myself, as, you know, I want people to have the opportunity to earn an income, and I know that the world's a changing place as we see from day to day, but I also would like to have the opportunity maybe to consider that the applicant have the opportunity to maybe request a continuance to see if the other part of the process may be more favorable than we realize, and they can come back before us again. I'm not sure if the board needs that.
I would agree with you.
You would agree? Okay.
I would agree. Yeah, absolutely.
Through the chair. Point of clarification, the board did vote to close the public portion of the hearing already.
Okay. Yeah, you're right. Okay. So, getting back to that procedural, so I, do I have a motion on the hearing at 6:05? That's all we can really do?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
You may.
I, so, I don't disagree that, and I think with Ms. Roach and her thoughtful comments relative to kind of getting some ducks in a row, that it may be premature for us. And we certainly don't want to slam doors on folks that are trying to move forward with a business venture. But having said that, I don't see a path for this business as it's stated today. Now, if there's value in them taking back and asking for a continuance so that they can dig in and see if there's a reasonable way to navigate what's before them that's more palatable and satisfies the building commissioner's comments relative to the address, the home address, then I would certainly be open to reopening the public hearing and giving them an opportunity to decide to either ask for a vote this evening or request a continuance. I think those are the two options before us.
Through the chair, if I may?
Many, sir?
I think it may be more appropriate to vote to reopen the hearing and offer the applicant the ability to withdraw their application without prejudice. I don't know that a continuance is going to serve anyone's purpose, as obtaining their license from the other boards may take quite a bit of time.
I understand. I appreciate those, Caleb, and I agree. So, with that being said, I know how I'm going to move forward with this. So, I have what the information presented before me and the thoughts that have been wisely brought forth by the members of the board, do I have a motion to reopen the public portion of the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, motion to reopen the public portion of the hearing.
Second? Do I have a second?
Rich Cuzzi, second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Roach will consider yours a vote. Mr. Chikolo?
Denied.
You say deny?
Grant.
Okay. So, we still have, I'm going to make the, agree to make the motion to open the public hearing, so we have a four to one, so it will open. So, Ms. Rivera and Mr. Ramos, as you can see, would love to be able to work with you on this, but I think the board has discussed that it seems to be a bit premature, and I would tend to agree. You know, you might want to go, and I'm not going to suggest anything, but the DCG, which is a group of our very well-informed department heads in town who could offer some advice on that, and they do meet, I'm not sure what the schedule is like with COVID, but that's a possibility, for to withdraw your application without prejudice and be able to maybe explore some of the options at the other levels, and then you can come back before us. Because if we vote on this tonight and we deny, you can't come back for two years.
Yeah, we agree.
Okay. So, if that, you agree, then what I would like to ask is if you would please submit to the board that you would like to request the application be withdrawn without prejudice. That's what I need you to tell me.
Okay. Go ahead.
We would like to withdraw our application without prejudice.
Excellent. Thank you. So, I have a motion from the applicant to remove, to withdraw without prejudice. Do I have a motion on the applicant's request?
I think, yeah. I'll vote to grant.
Thank you, Mr. Cuzzi. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Roach. Mr. Maron, how you vote?
I'll accept the request to withdraw.
Thank you. Mr. Chikolo?
Denied.
Thank you, sir. And I will vote to accept the withdrawal. So, what I would recommend is meet with Caleb. I'm also going to put before the board that we can have a request to refund their application costs associated with this, you know, I mean, I think hardship enough going on right now. So, do I have a motion on that as well?
I'll make that motion, Rich Cuzzi.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cuzzi. Do I have a second?
I'll second that as well.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Roach. Mr. Maron?
I'll approve.
Thank you. Mr. Chikolo?
Standing.
Thank you. And I vote to approve. So, we're going to let you withdraw, and then we're going to let you get a refund on your application fees. Hopefully, you can explore some options and maybe come before us in the not too long future.
Thank you so much.
All right. Good luck. Thank you.
Have a great night.
All right. So, as those people leave the virtual room, so to speak, of that, the slow process of getting ready for our 6:10. So...
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
You might, sir.
I, thank you. I would just remind you that you will be calling forth one of the alternates, as Caleb stated for our last meeting, that I was ineligible to vote on this particular project. So, I just wanted to remind you that you'll need to call one of the alternates, as I will be not available.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Actually, yourself and Ms. Roach are not eligible to vote on this particular hearing, so I'll be bringing both Mr. Jones and Ms. Bush forward as full voting members for the 6:10 applicant for Eastland Partners. So, Mr. Chikolo and Ms. Roach will not be participating in this hearing, and Mr. Jones and Ms. Bush will run forward from the, from the bench, so to speak, to get up into the game. So, they'll be voting for us. So, we have a 6:10 PM applicant, Eastland Partners Incorporated, requesting a comprehensive permit under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40B, for workforce housing apartments on property located at 109 Jinkin Hill Road, Auburn, Mass., map 59, parcels 8 and 26, Albert Street, Auburn, Mass., map 65, parcel 71. And for the record, this is a continuation from 5/21, 6/18, 7/16, 8/20, 9/17, and the 10/15, 2020 meeting. So, with that being said, do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Through the chair. The hearing remains open from the last meeting, as it was continued.
And that's why we have you, Caleb. I appreciate that. That is correct. This hearing has remained open. So, with that being said, we're going to take up where we left off. And do I have the applicant representative's present?
Yes, you do, Mr. Chairman. Steve O'Connell from Turning Point Engineering. With me here this evening on behalf of Eastland is Chad Boardman and Clayton Williams.
Excellent. Thank you. So, I'm going to give the floor to you, and I would like to hear the final presentation on what's going on with the, with our final agreement here.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks. I'd like to just let you know that we've been working diligently with the staff to reach what, you know, we consider a nearly complete decision document for this application. We've been working diligently with them, and we appreciate their efforts. We have got to the point where we have just two outstanding topics that we'd like to discuss with the board tonight. And what I'd like to start off with is condition, a latest copy of the permit, which I believe you have, dated today, condition 4.3.1, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, absolutely.
It's on page eight of the document that Caleb circulated today.
All right. So, if I could just direct the members of the board to refer to page eight of the document you received in the last few days at your residence?
Through the chair.
Okay, I thought, today?
Yeah. Got the right document.
I'm sorry. I had to tell people to talk at once. Caleb, go ahead.
It's a document that was received today, is the latest version.
Yeah, okay. That's fine. So, if you want to start going over them, we'll follow along. Please do.
Okay, great. So, this is the condition 4.3.1. At the bottom of the page, you can see the red font, the document on the screen, and this condition pertains to the local impact mitigation fee that was agreed upon with the Board of Selectment by Eastland during the lift application to DHCD for this comprehensive permit, with a sum of money of $500,000 for local impact mitigation provided to the town of Auburn. So, the initial version of this decision didn't have any time disbursement for payments. We, in response to that, had proposed that $50,000 be provided to the town upon issuance of occupancy permits for buildings 3 through 12.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Town staff came back with the font you see in red that says, provided that all associated payments are due to the town of Auburn no more than two years from the date of approval of this comprehensive permit.
Okay.
So, unfortunately, it's just, that's a pretty restrictive condition, and what we'd like to offer in return, and we'd like to discuss this with the board, is what we would propose is $50,000 for a building upon the issuance of a building permit, starting with the first building and going through building number 10. And that, within two years of receipt of the first building permit, the total sum of money will be paid.
I see. So, let me clarify for the board. I just want to make sure that all the folks are following along. So, what the applicant is proposing that, if you see on the screen, I'm going to read this out just in case somebody can't see it, it says, this is from the town's proposal or the town's recommendation, provided that all associated payments are due to the town of Auburn no more than two years from the date of approval of this comprehensive permit. The applicant is proposing to break that down to $50,000 over the construction lifetime of the 10 buildings proposed. So, the reason I'm pointing that out, I just want to make sure everybody is on the same page and understands the difference here. So, the applicant could wait up to two years from the date of the issuance of the permit and pay it all in one shot, or they can, as milestones are completed on-site, they will pay the town. So, my question, well, I shouldn't say question, but the point of clarification that we'll discuss at some point in the future, I just want to make note of that. So, can we move on to something else? The next issuance you have here, the issue?
Through the chair.
I'd prefer to just resolve one more time.
Second? Caleb, go ahead.
I would agree with the applicant. I think it makes most sense to go through these items as they come up and discuss them and come to some sort of conclusion, rather than go through all of them and then go back to them.
Yeah, you know, you want to hear part of the time? Okay. That's fine with me. So, I'm going to...
Mr. Chairman?
No.
This is Lou Levine, attorney for Eastland. Just so there's no misunderstanding, what Steve was saying is that the, there would be $50,000 due on the issuance of any or each building permit, but that the two years would run for the issuance of the first building permit and be due, no matter what, in full, the $500,000, within two years of the issuance of the first building permit. Staff has it beginning, which we understand, at the comprehensive permit, but I think everybody would recognize that we're not going to be able to pull building permits for a good six to nine months after you issue the comprehensive permit. We have to submit architectural and full building plans to the building inspector, fire code stuff has to be reviewed by the fire department and as well as the building plans by the building inspector. We have to arrange for the water from the town of Worcester, et cetera. So, the comprehensive permit really isn't the starting gun, but, you know, the starting gun would be the first building permit, and then no matter what amount would be due in full two years thereafter, any building permits applied for in that two-year period, we would make a $50,000 payment towards the $200,000, but no matter what, it would be paid in full $200,000 after the issuance of the first building permit.
Okay. So, I appreciate that point of clarification. So, Mr. Maron, I'm going to start with that little break we have in the action here. We'll go around and discuss. Mr. Maron, do you have anything you want to add to it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just given that this is a financial topic within the agreement, I'd like to ask Caleb, so whom from the town was involved in proposing the tax that the town proposed to the applicant?
So, through the chair, just for the clarification, this is not a tax. It's a local impact mitigation that the applicant has agreed to pay. They volunteered to pay this amount. This is nothing that they're required to pay. The idea of this fee is for local impact mitigation. So, the town's concern with how they're outlining the payment is this project could be under construction for upwards of two years before a building permit's even applied for. So, I don't necessarily have an issue with the way they proposed their latest proposal. I guess the only caveat I would like to add is maybe putting a three-year term from the issuance of the comprehensive permit. from the issuance of the comprehensive permit. I think the way they have it worded, it could, it could go five or six years before the town saw a payment and the neighbors could see some impact in that time.
We don't have any problems, we don't have any problem with that. That's a reasonable...
Okay, so, um, I guess...
Mr. Chairman, apologies for interrupting you, but...
Okay, you're not interrupting, that's okay. I'm just trying to make sure that we all stay on the same page as far as the decorum requirements here. Uh, now, you know, it's just hard enough to manage a meeting with everybody present in the same room, but, you know, with mics and cameras flipping on and off, I just got to be careful not stepping on each other so we can have accurate minutes and we can all respond to each other appropriately. So with that being said, um, the, an attorney representing the applicant has said that they don't have a problem with what Caleb has proposed. So, Mr. Maron, I think you have some thoughts to add?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Caleb, thank you for that explanation in the background. I understand what, what this is and what the intent is, um, on the fiduciary, but my question was specifically, the text that the town provided in the document, who is responsible for that first draft or the second draft or the current draft? Who's responsible for taking the spot, the spot that the town wrote?
So through the chair.
Is that you? Is that someone else?
Through the chair. The staff that has, has taken part in constructing this decision and reviewing it has been the town engineer, the town planner, myself, the director of development inspectional services, and it was reviewed by town council.
Okay, so the premise of my question is, is that if you're, if you were the building commissioner and involved in that team that proposed the draft forward, if you're, if you are prepared to speak on behalf of what the town is proposing, um, then, then I would, I would just recommend, Mr. Chairman, that, that we go with what Caleb's recommendation is if he can speak for that team.
I appreciate that, thank you. So if you have no other thoughts, I'm going to go around and, uh, are you all set, Mr. Maron?
I am, Mr. Chairman, for this, uh, for this point.
Okay, so I just want to go around and make sure that we give all the others opportunity to have any input if they haven't. So, Mr. Cussey, sir?
Uh, I'll, uh, I agree with Caleb. Um, sounds good to me.
Okay. Um, Mr. Jones?
I have no questions and I, I certainly appreciate Caleb's input here.
Thank you. Ms. Bush?
Um, I have no questions.
Thank you. So my only comments here, and I agree with all parties concerned, it seems like we're going to be able to come to a reasonable conclusion very quickly, but my thing is that, you know, a $50,000 payment to the town upon the issuance of a building permit doesn't really have a lot of, um, it doesn't have a lot of meat on the bone for the town to do anything with that $50,000. It goes into the general fund and it's not as if the town can buy a fire truck with that. I mean, it maybe gets a cruiser, 50 grand, I'm not really sure, but pretty close. I would personally like to see it as a lump sum, one-time payment, because I think even though the money is the same, the amount of money received at one time provides the town with, I think, at least in my mind, with, uh, more opportunities to use that for the sentiment of the community. So that, that's just my thought on how I think the payment should be done. If everybody wants to have it structured and they're all fine with it, I'm cool with it too, then that works. But I just think that, you know, if I'm getting a certain amount of money every week or if I get a whole bunch of money at once, I'm getting my house fixed a lot faster than I would if I got smaller payments, you know what I mean? So with that being said, that's all I think. Um, anybody else have any input?
Mr. Chairman, just to round out my comments, I mean, I, I think, um, I think I would, I would just ask the, the board to consider Caleb's position and, and his recommendation. I think it's sound and, uh, and he's certainly in touch with the team that would make this decision.
Okay, and that's, I just wanted to make sure we, you know, that point was available, um, and I just thought I would be, I, I would be not doing my duty if I did not bring that forward. So Caleb, if you want to go over what you propose again, then please, sir, just one more time?
So through the chair, my proposal would be that the condition 4.3.1 read, as stated in the letter of April 29th, 2020 to Mr. Robert J. Tatro, Chairman of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals, the applicant has budgeted and agrees to expend a minimum of $500,000 for local impact mitigation related to the application within the town of Auburn, exclusive of public water supply improvements, which shall be paid as follows: $50,000 upon the issuance of each building permit for buildings one through 10, provided that all associate payments are due to the town of Auburn no more than three years from the date of approval of this comprehensive permit. I would turn to the applicant to see if they agree with that.
Right, that's where we headed next, so, um, to the applicant, you can see really the wording has only changed from a two to a three. Um, does that work for you all?
That's fine, Mr. Chairman, we appreciate it.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Steve O'Connell here on behalf of the applicant. I, I think one word that, uh, would be important to strike, and I don't believe it was in the original letter, whereas it says expend a minimum of 500. The applicant was committed to spending 500, but not a minimum of 500,000.
Okay, so I, if that has been the agreement, then I believe we should probably strike the word minimum in front of the 500,000, Caleb. Uh, are you in agreement with that?
Yes, I've noted that and I can make that change.
Excellent, thank you. Um, so I think then if we're going to move on and redline this, then we should, in my humble opinion at least, and if the board has any other thoughts or concerns, we should vote on the changes and move on so we are clear with everything before we get to the next step.
Through the chair.
Mr. Chairman, Pete Jones, I do have one...
Hold on one second. Uh, Caleb, go ahead first, please.
I was just going to make the recommendation that we, uh, there's only a couple items that the applicant wants to speak on. We let them speak on their, um, items. We can make the changes and then the board would vote on the, the decision as amended on the floor.
Amended on the floor.
Okay, I appreciate that. That works. All right, so one more, last one then?
I just, I didn't want to interrupt Mr. Jones. I think he did have a question before we moved on.
Oh, yeah, okay. All right, guys, Mr. Jones, I yield the floor to you, sir.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I'm, uh, as Mr. Moody read it, he said buildings one through 10, but in the draft that I received via email today, it says three through 12. Uh, I'm just...
So through the chair, that change is something that the applicant has brought forward at the meeting tonight. Rather than occupancies for occupancy permits for buildings three through 12, they're suggesting building permits for buildings one through 10.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Jones, is that clarification acceptable?
Uh, yes, thank you.
Excellent, thank you so much. We'll move on. Okay, um, so we're going to move on to the next. To the applicant, do you want to present the next one?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just, I'm a little confused. Um, you know, what, what we had offered when I first spoke was, was a little different than what is in writing, but then I think what, what we were somewhat agreeing to a moment ago was a mix of the two. So just for clarification, are we, are we talking about what's in writing except changing the two years to three years? So it's, it's upon issuance of occupancy permit for buildings three through 12, and then that the total payments are made within three years of the date of the comprehensive permit?
Steve, what Caleb suggested was upon the issuance of building permits, one through 10, okay? But no matter what, in three years. That's it. Okay? That's what we agreed to. All right?
Yeah, just one clarification.
Sure. Want to be clear as well?
Thank you, but it's the issuance of building permits, but no matter what, the full amount is paid in three years from the issuance of a comprehensive permit. Okay?
That's right, Caleb?
That is, that's correct.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Caleb.
Before I move forward with all that, everybody, so we're clear on that, um, the language for 4.3.1?
I'm clear, Bob.
Okay, so let's see clarification on the next redline item then, please?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, there's only one other issue. And Chad will speak to it. This is it for the, the, uh, this is it, the, the one other issue. Chad?
That's excellent.
Yeah, actually, actually, the board, Steve's going to lead off on it, Mr. right now. Thank you. Uh, so just, the, the outstanding issue is probably not going to be, uh, a new issue as it relates to the board. It's the construction hours. Um, you know, what we'd like to do is take a moment and, um, confirm that the board received a document we had provided prior to the last meeting. It was a pretty substantial document, uh, justifying our position about the construction hours, uh, starting at 7:00 AM. And we think it's real compelling information, um, with regards to overall public safety, construction timelines, um, et cetera. And we'd like to get the board's input on that document and see if it was found to be compelling. You know, we'd also like to know why the town's position is a 8:00 AM construction start time. Um, it's just, it's not industry standard. Uh, part of the information we provided talks about surrounding communities and other projects, uh, where standard construction start times are 7:00 AM. Um, and if, if the town could provide us some justification for their start times, it might help us understand, uh, and maybe have a more fruitful dialogue. Uh, but this is, this is still a concern of ours. It's definitely going to have an impact on the, on the longevity of the project, and this is the only outstanding item we'd, we'd like to just discuss now.
Okay, so I know, and just to give a very, very brief history of this, the board, I think, has been split on its opinion in the past. Um, some of us recognizing that 8:00 AM start time is important for the sanctity of the surrounding community, if you will, and then others thinking that the earlier start time ends the project overall at the finish line quicker. So, um, with that being said, um, I will yield the floor to Caleb. Is there anyone or any history that you are aware of, besides the members of the board, exterior of the board, that, uh, have sort of requested a persistent amount of 8:00 AM start time?
Through the chair, um, I think I speak for the rest of the staff, and our position is that these, these work hours are what is recommended or conditioned on all town projects. Um, I have never supported different work hours nor has any of the other staff, so that, that's why we're staying with this. This is past practice for the planning board and the zoning board for work hours for previous projects.
So if this is, you consider this, or this is, from at least a recent historical perspective, you would consider this a standard for the Auburn, uh, building requirements pretty much then?
That is correct. I'm not aware of any site plan approvals that have gone forward with different work hours than those that were presented.
And you?
So to the members of the board?
Through the chair?
Yes.
This is Steve O'Connell. Is there a rationale behind those work hours? Because it's the only community in that, that I've ever worked in where those are the work hours.
I can't speak...
Uh, to Caleb, to you, sir?
Through the chair. I can't speak for the planning board, but I, I think it's to minimize impact on the neighbors.
Um, so, uh, you know, to the applicant, you heard, so this is best standard in town, historically speaking, it's been an 8:00 AM start time to maintain the, uh, sanctity of the neighbors, if you will. It has not been changed in the past, but I'm going to open it up to the board to have another discussion on it. Um, with that being said, yes, so I'm in...
Um, if you, if you recall, um, at the last meeting, there was discussion, um, about interior versus exterior work. And, um, you know, the idea being that interior work, painting, you know, electrical plumbing as opposed to generally site work, um, would not impede or affect, you know, the neighbors or shouldn't. Um, and it was kind of a, a two-to-two break on the board, and I'm not saying anybody voted, you know, I think it was more of a straw poll. I'm not saying anybody was committed, you know, in, in stone to their position, either for or against. Um, what I would ask the board to, this is a large project, you know, it's a dozen buildings, et cetera. So, um, I would ask the board, not as a compromise, but just as a reasonable suggestion, um, that A, if, to permit the interior work, um, from 7:00 to 5:00, um, with the, you know, with the reasoning that I gave, that it should be interior, um, and to permit the exterior work, um, also 7:00 to 5:00, but, um, to have a review period so many months after construction starts, which is, is, includes site construction, that we come back before the board and see if there are any issues, and if so, then the board can, um, have the site work, um, you know, go to 8:00 to 4:30. We try to get the project over with as quickly as possible so not to impede anybody. So, um, so that's my suggestion to permit the interior work in any event, 7:00 to 5:00, and to permit the exterior work, 7:00 to 5:00, but then have a recall provision so many months, it could be three months, uh, after, you know, any site work is commenced, um, so that the building inspector can indicate whether or not he feels any issues, whether there are any complaints to the neighbors, and if so, then you can go back to the 8:00 to 4:30, um, hours. But, okay, you know, I, I, I think that's reasonable. If everything's working out well, um, everybody's fat and happy, then, um, we can continue it, and you can continue that every three months thereafter, as far as I'm concerned, that the matter would be subject to the board's review every, periodically, and if they're not satisfied, then they can roll the exterior hours back to 8:00 to 4:30.
Um, so, I mean, again, you know, we've heard this discussion, I'm going to, I, I want to make sure that my board members are still present with us. So I'm going to take a break from the applicant in the town side, I'm going to bring it back to the board for a minute, or go around there and say, let's start with our vice chair, Mr. Maron, your thoughts on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been on record on this issue. Um, my position hasn't changed. I'm, I'm not, um, in agreement that, um, changing the hours. Um, I did read the brief that came forward. I think that there was certainly a lot of thought put into it, but frankly, um, this is the way, um, as been described by our building commissioner, this is the way that Auburn, um, as a town approaches this business, and I think that that's what we should fall down on, uh, or fall back on. You know, succinctly, I don't prescribe to the fact that, um, if we modify these hours, that the project is going to somehow, um, land on time and not be extended. Um, there will be time overruns in the course of a project. I think the premise of the size and scope of this project, um, speaks directly to why we should. It holds to what the town is recommending in the way we do business and keep to the language without any modification that the town's put forward.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um, Mr. Cussey?
Yeah, I agree. I, I believe we should just stick with the, uh, the town rules. I mean, that's, uh, that's how everyone else works, uh, in town, so I agree that we stay with the town hours.
Okay, um, I have to make sure I'm calling the right person forward again. Mr. Jones?
Uh, thank you. Um, so I think that, um, uh, Mr. Levine makes a pretty good point where, you know, it's an industry standard. Having worked in construction myself in a large, uh, like specifically in a large apartment tower being built in Denver, I, you know, the hours are generally longer than eight and a half. Um, but at the same time, I, I can see Mr. Maron's point where, you know, this is a town, it's not Denver, it's not Worcester, you know, this is a residential area. Um, so, you know, while I see both arguments, I, I tend to favor Mr. Levine's.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Bush?
Um, I can see both arguments too, but I think we should go with the recommendations of one... of what the town has, um, recommended, the building commissioner. Um, we have certain standards in the town, and I think we need to stick to those.
Okay, I appreciate that input, thank you very much. Um, you know, so my thoughts on this, I think, I honestly think this should be a sliding scale, I don't, I don't, I don't think we have the votes for it, but it seems to me any exterior noisy work should be, uh, you know, controlled to a certain number of daylight hours, and quite honestly, if I had my way, I would allow any type of quiet painting, uh, electrical work, any of those things go honestly 3 to 11, but I just don't have that authority, so that's not gonna happen on my watch. Um, so with that being said, I, um, I think we've covered this enough, I don't think there's gonna be really add to it, it doesn't seem like the board's gonna move either way. Um, so do we have anything else we wanna discuss?
Um, Mr. Chairman, if, uh, if staff, if Caleb or, or some other staff member could explain, uh, to us the intent of the condition as it's currently written, when it talks about, when it defines what construction activities are, because all of the construction activities listed appear to be site work related, uh, so am I to assume that non-site work related activities may be permitted outside of these work hours, like we've previously discussed, interior work perhaps? I'm, I'm just, just trying to have a better understanding of it, of the way it's written.
So I, I think that that's something, and I, I'm, I'm not certainly trying to speak to Caleb or tell him, but I honestly think that's something that if we agree upon the specific work hours as outlined, and as, um, you know, professional developers and the town, uh, meeting in the future can decide, I think, um, you know, I, I obviously have to stay within the town, agree upon requirements, but if they say that it's okay to spend three extra hours painting, I don't think that really violates the intent and purpose of our decision. I think it's to maintain the integrity of the lifestyle of the neighborhoods surrounding it.
Through the chair.
So, I, I mean, I, I see it as, you have the opportunity to have discussions with Caleb in the town, as far as what's going on in the future too.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir?
I think Mr. Coyle would like to speak to the definition of work.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes, please. I would appreciate that. Okay, so if everyone is listening, I'm gonna yield the floor to Mr. Coyle. Sir, please go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, in, in regards to the question, the beginning on 4.2.9 indicates all construction activity relating to this decision shall be limited to the hours as indicated. I, my opinion is that the items listed thereafter are not exclusive to just those items. The beginning of the, the statement is all construction activity related to the decision, which would include interior work as well. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I, I honestly do appreciate that, and again, I, you know, I'm just trying to see if we can get both parties here to agree on a happy medium and proposing things. I certainly don't wanna violate any agreements that is, uh, you know, written in stone here. Um, so with that being said, honestly, gentlemen on both sides and ladies, I, it doesn't seem like the board is, uh, interested in changing its opinion on that, um, so maybe we can revisit it towards the end of the hearing, or maybe not, but I think it's time that we move on to whatever the other issues may be regarding this particular, uh, the rest of the application, I should say.
Mr. Chairman, through the chair?
Yes.
I think that's it. I, I really appreciate the cooperation of the town. The fact that we don't have a lot to talk about tonight is just a, um, you know, a representation of how hard the town worked, you know, cooperatively and the applicant to reduce issues. So I, we're, we're done for tonight. I mean, the, um, there were changes that staff made, um, that addressed some of concerns, and there were, there were, uh, acceptance by the applicant of some changes, uh, that they were less than happy with, but we all wanna move forward. So I would just leave it up to the board tonight to contemplate the decision as you now have it.
I appreciate that, Steve.
With the change, you know, that you discussed with respect to the 500,000.
Okay, um, thank you very much. So, uh, Caleb, for the town side, do you have anything else that you may need to add, or any other of the town representative present?
Through the chair, I don't have anything to add, I'd just like to thank the applicant for working with us on, on the decision. It was quite lengthy and complicated, and they, they made it seamless. Um, point of clarification, you'd be looking for a motion to close the public hearing, and then a motion on the decision as amended on the floor tonight.
Yes, sir, I appreciate the clarification. It's been a long, confusing, months-long process, though. That is certainly helpful, I appreciate that. Um, so with that being said, um...
I would, through the chair...
Do I have any applicants, oh, excuse me, any butters to speak? I wanna check for a butters here before I move forward. Do any of butters present or listening in the meeting wanna, uh, add anything?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
No, no, I thought I got a couple of questions.
Can you identify yourself, sir, and, um, what your name and address is, and if you are a butter?
I'm not a butter. Mark Hall, 4 Field Street, uh, Town Eman Precinct 4, and town representative to the, um, Worcester Regional Transit, sorry. I was wondering if they're gonna allow a, um, bus to pull into that site with a, um, bus shelter, and to make sure that the roads are wide enough, and so a 40-foot bus could turn around. Is there pedestrian lights at Albert Street and, uh, Route 20 at each corner of the intersection with the audio sound for the vision impaired?
I'm sorry, so I just wanna make sure, is there a what there? Is it a traffic light, you said?
Is, is, no, is there, um, pedestrian lights at each corner of the, um, intersection with the audio sound, vision impaired?
Oh, I see what you mean. Um, so, uh, our, um, concerned citizen is asking if there, you know, at the bus stop, if there is handicap accessibility for those with impaired vision. So are there audible cues at that bus stop, is what he's asking?
I mean, I'm talking about the intersection, Mr. Chair.
Oh, at the intersection. So that's gonna have to be, I can't re, refer that to the applicant, that has to go to the town, so I'm gonna refer that...
Okay. And another question? Um, if, um, they get a couple of buildings built and finished, and they don't fill with residents, will they keep on, uh, building new ones, or will they stop?
So the applicant's, or the, the concerned citizen's question is, so I think it relates back to our, um, occupancy question, is if get to the point where you recognize that maybe you've, um, fulfilled the apartment needs in the area, would you stop ever building? That's for the applicant.
Yeah. Uh, well, I mean, that's always, uh, an economic question, uh, based on, you know, economic studies and housing market studies done in this area, we wouldn't have proposed 324 units if we didn't think there was a need and that they would be filled. Um, of course, I don't believe anyone would build large buildings that weren't, and didn't think were gonna be occupied, uh, so I can't answer the question definitively, but, uh, we would be responsive to, you know, housing and economic needs, which are unpredictable. But our intention would be to build it, build it out, occupy them as fast as possible.
Yeah, you just say the city buildings, that's all. Would you allow the WRTA?
Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Benal, so, um, again, it's based on the economic requirement and how the thing goes, so how, how the building process goes, um, I don't think the applicant is committed to request stay, uh, but, I mean, there's always opportunities in the future of a change. I think right now it'll be the complete 324 units.
Okay. And would you allow the WRTA buses to pull into the site?
Um, yes.
So to the applicant, through the chair, so the WRTA bus will be allowed to pull into the actual site, correct?
Yes, we've been working with the WRTA on providing transit, not just to this project, but some other Eastland projects in the region, so we are very much in touch with WRTA.
Well, you guys, well, thank you very much.
So, Mr. Benal, I really do wanna thank you also for calling in, because, you know, going around the board here, I know you pay attention very closely to, um, town goings-on, and I also know that you're a very important advocate for the handicap people in town, so I do appreciate you putting your input in during this. So thank you for, and you actually brought up two or three good points that we didn't, so thank you for paying attention to what's going on, making sure we're doing our job.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you, you're doing a good job.
All right, take care, Mr. Benal.
Thank you, bye.
Do I have any other applicants? Uh, excuse me, a butter is present. Okay, any other butters that wanna speak? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, I'll give a compound of five, four, three, two, one, then we will close the opportunities for a butter to speak. One last time around the horn, Mr. Maron, do you have anything you'd like to complete, uh, to, uh, ask, excuse me?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as, as I understand it, um, with the documents that I have, uh, the draft, that we would be moving forward with, as amended by the comments, on the first point that was raised by Caleb, I think I understand those, those edits. Um, the 4.2.9 section, um, as I understand it, um, we would move forward with a draft that speaks directly from what the staff draft before us indicates, correct?
I'm gonna defer the floor to Mr. Moody, Mr. Moody, excuse me?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, I, I don't have any further comments, I, I would just offer my appreciation in walking through this process. Um, I think we all learn and get uplifted from this, so I think the, um, the applicant, as well as, um, several members of the town, have given us an opportunity to step through this process correctly.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cussie?
No questions, Bob, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Bush?
Nothing.
Excellent, thank you. So, before we, uh, move on to the next step, I really just wanna take 30 seconds to tell everyone involved in this that even as a citizen, if I remove myself from the zoning board requirements and the activities that we've all been familiar with through this whole process, you know, the folks at home are gonna know that the town worked as much as they can to represent the interests of the town, the, uh, applicants did a spectacular job of working through this 40B. This really, in my opinion, um, could not have been a better public-private partnership to get something done that people just don't necessarily like to have. And obviously, there was a substantial amount of thought, agreement, really, a whole lot of, uh, you know, last-minute wrangling to get it all done, so really, I do appreciate the efforts of everyone, and I would, uh, you know, also really wanna kinda specifically thank the town engineer, Mr. Coyle, um, for making himself available even many nights after hours for questions, concerns, and comments, and letting the people realize that, um, the hours these townsfolk put in, um, for what they do to make sure that their town, that they're representing their town professionally. And to the applicant, honestly, I do believe that. I don't believe the town could have found a better partner to create such a large 40B, um, situation here. So I really wanna thank you all for being very cooperative. And to the board, again, last one, thank you all for stepping up, figuring out who was gonna vote this week and who wasn't, and watching the videos and paying attention, you know, as the towns, um, you know, as just a person that lives in town, not just a member of the board, you know, I appreciate you all very much, um, putting the effort in and making sure that you're scrutinizing these projects, um, to make sure that all those folks at home are being adequately represented. So, again, this was, to me, a great learning experience, and also, I think, an amazing partnership between all parties, so really, thank you very much for that. Um, so with that being said, do I have a motion to close the public hearing on the six, 10 applicant for Eastland Partners?
Mr. Chairman, motion to close the public hearing as stated.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Yeah, Richard Cussie, second.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Jones?
Close.
Thank you, Ms. Bush?
Uh, close.
Okay, so the longstanding open public portion of the hearing has been closed, so do I have a motion on the...
Through the chair, just, just, through the chair, just for the record, could you provide your vote on the motion?
Ah, yeah, I suppose I should probably do that, right? I also agree to the motion of closing the public portion of the hearing.
Thank you.
So with that being said, do I have a motion on the Mass General Law, Chapter 40B Workforce Housing Apartment on property located at 109 Dinkin Hill Road, Auburn, Mass., map 59, parcel 826, Albert Street, Auburn, Mass., map 65, parcel 71? Do I have a motion on the floor?
Yep, this is Richard Cussie, I'll make a motion to grant.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Cussie, do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
So just, through the chair...
Mr. Maron, thank you. Mr. Jones?
Through the chair, before you call for the vote, we just clarify that that motion is going to be to approve the certificate of decision, the comprehensive permit dated November 19th, 2020, as amended on the floor of the meeting.
Thank you. So, um, I would like to add that language, uh, to the recording secretary, please, to make sure that that is adequate and reflects properly in the record, because if I try to repeat it, quite honestly, I would not do a very good job of it. So we're gonna add that as stated by Caleb Moody, building commissioner. So thank you. Um, so do I have a motion on the floor with Caleb's language amended into it?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve as amended and stated by the commissioner.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Cussie?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Uh, yes, approve.
Thank you, Ms. Bush?
Approved.
Thank you very much, and I, as the chair, Robert Tedrow, approve. Congratulations to all parties concerned. I'm sure you can be in contact with Caleb and all the members of the town hall, you have been all along through this process. So, um, yeah, thank you very much, and I really appreciate everyone's efforts, so have a great night, enjoy your Thanksgiving, and please be safe.
Good night, everyone, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The floor continues to work with you.
Hang on, I just heard Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just would, I would just say to you that, uh, I've been doing this for several decades, many decades, and I've only been involved in the last two meetings. But putting the, the, uh, permit aside, uh, the board in the last two weeks, is my observation, is extremely, extremely, uh, uh, professional, um, um, and I really appreciate it, and I would give you, not that I have the entitlement to give anybody kudos, but I would, you know, credit you for really, as a chairman, running a very, uh, reasonable, uh, approach to the issues that were before. So thank you very much. I've gone to hundreds and hundreds of these meetings, okay? So, thank you.
I do appreciate that, thank you, sir.
No, thanks for the board members, too.
Absolutely. So, um, I think you're all set, we're gonna actually move on for the first 20 months from this project to, uh, other business. So good luck, gentlemen, enjoy the holidays, and ladies and gentlemen.
Good night, gentlemen, thank you.
Okay, so, we have other business to move on to, which is a request for modification for 3 Vinyl Street. Can, uh, is there an applicant present, Caleb, or are you gonna respond to this, or where are we at with this? Can you explain it to the board?
Um, through the chair, we did have an applicant present, I don't know if she's still present. Yeah, Carmen Chong is present. Paul Haverdy.
Mr. Chairman, Paul Haverdy from Blatman-Babrocki and Haverdy, the applicant.
All right, hang on one second, we had some kind of a very strange, um, dark voice in the background, for the second hand. Um, all right, so, I'm sorry, sir, uh, if you could introduce yourself again, please?
Yes, Paul Haverdy from Blatman-Babrocki and Haverdy, representing the applicant.
Okay, uh, is the applicant present?
Yes. Carmen Chong, Carmen, you wanna introduce yourself?
Yes. Something's wrong with the connection.
Right, hang on, I can hear you, but I can't see you. Oh, I take that back, I can see you, but I can't hear you. You are muted on the, um, go to meeting...
Through the chair.
Okay.
I temporarily muted Carmen, she's having a little issues with her audio, but Mr. Haverdy can continue.
Yeah, I, I can probably take, take care of this.
Okay, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, what we have in front of you is a request for an extension of the comprehensive permit. Um, as you can see, the permit was issued in November of 2009... Um, as you can see, the permit was issued in November of two thousand and seventeen, and under Chapter Forty-B, comprehensive permits are good for a period of three years, and if substantial construction doesn't commence within that three-year period, the permit lapses, unless the applicant requests an extension of the permit prior to the permit lapsing, um, which is what we have done for tonight. Um, we are requesting that the board issue a three-year extension, just because that is the typical length of a comprehensive permit term. We actually believe that substantial construction will commence, um, by January at the latest, and that is the, the current intention, but it, it's just typical for extensions to be for that three-year period, so that's why we have requested that. There are also two other minor requests, um, just really postkeeping items, and that was to modify the decision to note that it's going to be for the construction of sixty units rather than the sixty-one units noted in the decision, and also to reduce the number of affordable units, um, to forty-five rather than the forty-seven noted in the decision, and this is still well above the twenty-five percent minimum requirement. Um, it represents a reduction of seventy-eight percent affordable to seventy-five percent affordable, um, and we believe that these are, uh, insubstantial changes pursuant to the regulations at seven sixty CMR fifty-six point zero five eleven, um, so they can be administered by the board administratively without the need for a, a formally noticed public hearing.
Okay, um...
Any other questions?
All right, I appreciate that presentation. Caleb, um, so do you see any issue with the board moving forward these, um, everything has been, uh, posted for the time being and all the requirements from town that...
Through the, through the chair, I don't have any issue with the request. I feel they're minor modifications. Um, the applicant has applied for building permits, so they are moving forward. I would recommend the modification.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. Um, so with that being said, uh, Mr. Maron, how do you, uh, see this, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question to the applicant, so in, and just in simple terms, what's the, the primary reason for the extension need and the delay?
I don't think that question. This is Carmen Chung from Penrose. Uh, sorry, I had some technical difficulties, uh, earlier. Um, so we received, uh, financing from the state, uh, earlier this year, and since then, we've been progressing with our funders towards closing, um, and just based on the schedule when we got our funding from the state, um, the earliest that we can close is early twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, I'm assuming, I'm assuming that these financial delays were not anticipated in, in the original application process?
Uh, yes, that's true, correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, nothing further at this time.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Chacolo? Okay, he may have left the meeting?
Nothing right now.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Roach?
I'm okay. No questions, no opposition from me.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Cussey?
No questions, Bob.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Maron, has that been clarified to you?
Yeah, clarified. I, I understand that for the delay, I'm, I'm hopeful that it doesn't continue in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I know that they've been working diligently at the other, at the other, uh, site too, so, um, somebody's got some feedback going on in the background there, just so you know. All right, what we just, there you go, okay, that's been taken care of. Okay, so, um, Caleb, would we be really open the hearing again? Do we have to technically do that by law to, uh, make sure that we're following along with protocol, or can we just agree to the, you know, take a quick vote request for the modification?
Through the chair, my recommendation would be to take a vote to agree that the modification is minor in nature and then to take a separate vote to appro- approve the modification.
Excellent, thank you for that clarification. So with that being said, um, I think, Mr. Maron, do you agree or disagree that the, uh, modifications are minimal in nature?
So through the chair, we need a motion on the floor to state that the modification is minor in nature.
Yeah. Okay, I was going to go around...
Mr. Chairman, if I clarify, the, the terms in the regulations are insubstantial, so that should be the, the term used in the motion?
I appreciate that, thank you very much, sir. So with that being said, do I have a motion on the floor to consider the changes, the insubstantial?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make the motion as stated, but, um, just a point of clarification, if, if I may. Are, are we still in open hearings with the applicant?
Through the chair...
Well, that's what I was trying to figure out, but I don't think we are...
Through the chair, through the chair. If the changes, if the changes are voted to be insubstantial, then a public hearing is not required, just to vote of the board.
That's great. Excellent, thank you for that clarification, I appreciate that. So, Mr. Maron, with that being said, that's what, where we stand, so if we agree that it is insubstantial, then we can move forward with a vote. So the first step is to determine if we all agree that it's insubstantial, we need a motion on that first.
Yeah, I, I, I'll make my motion, um, as stated, that, that I would agree that it is insubstantial changes that we're looking at.
Excellent, thank you. Do I have a second on that?
Yeah, Richard Cussey, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Cussey. Um, Mr. Chacolo?
I, I agree.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Roach?
I'd agree.
Thank you. So I'm going to also take the, uh, unusual step in asking the all the members to vote and just have their vote on record, because, you know, we did have quite a few meetings in the past on this, and we may have one or two members that may not have participated in the entire, uh, process, so I just want to make sure that all persons present are going to agree upon this. So, Mr. Jones, how do you vote, sir? Mr. Jones, how do you vote? Okay, um, I'll go back to, uh, him in a minute. Ms. Bush, how you vote?
I agree.
Thank you. Um, if we don't get Mr. Bush, uh, Mr. Jones, excuse me, I'm giving you a follow-up without it.
Through the chair, we can only record five votes.
So we're fine, okay, that's good. I just wanted to make sure in the event we needed it, that it was clear that we were agreeing to it. So with that being said, we do have a motion accepted, that this would be considered, uh, insubstantial, so do I have a motion on the floor to move forward with accepting the request of modification?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, accept and approve.
Thank you very much, Mr. Maron. Um, do I have a vote, a second, please?
Yeah, Richard Cussey, second.
All right, so I got a second from Cussey and a second from Mr. Chacolo, so we'll accept the, we'll accept the Mr. Chacolo's, and Mr. Cussey, how do you vote, sir?
I approve.
Thank you. Ms. Roach?
I approve.
Thank you. Mr. Maron?
I made the most, but don't worry.
You're right, and I, Mr. Tedrow, the chair, I approve. So you're all set? Good luck, hope things, uh, go smooth.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we're going to move forward again, um, let them clear out. We have hearing dates for twenty twenty-one, we have minutes of the meeting, um, that we need to accept for May twenty-first, and then we have a next meeting, which is December seventeenth, so that's our, uh, remaining items that we have to wrap up. So, um, Caleb, if you could present the, the hearing dates for twenty twenty-one? I think I saw them earlier on the screen somewhere.
Yeah, through the chair, the hearing dates are just distributed to the board. If anybody has any issues, let us know and we can make the changes sooner rather than later. Nothing that needs to be voted on, just informational.
I appreciate that, thank you. So as you see, uh, members of the board, members of the public, this is our anticipated schedule for the, uh, twenty twenty-one season, if you will, um, and if any members of the board have any issues where they may be out of town for long term or may not be in the area for some reason, we can start working on that sooner rather than later, as Caleb mentioned. Um, so we also have the minutes of the meeting as submitted. Do I have a motion on the floor to accept the May twenty-first, twenty twenty, meeting minutes as submitted?
Mr. Chairman, before we move on to the minutes, if I may, back to the, um, the hearing date schedule?
Of course you can.
Mr. Maron, I'm way, I'm way ahead of you.
Just a quick question.
I'll make the correction on August and recent.
All right, um, noted, I seem to be, um, um, phonetically connecting to, uh, Mr., uh, the building commissioner this evening, um, Mr. Move, yeah, not, not stated, so I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as, as written.
So August two hundred and nineteenth, twenty twenty-one is what you're concerned with, you mean?
No, um, I, well, uh, I didn't focus on, on, on that specifically, but, uh, but I was, I was looking at the start time at seven PM, and I don't know if that matters.
Oh, good one, okay, I just happened to notice the typo. Um, so, okay, they can work on that, we can, I think as long as we're doing remote, I anticipate that I think we can probably keep it the way it is, and then we can figure that out from there.
Yeah, I would, minor point, agree, but I'll, um, but it's in the, in the risk of, of, uh, being the one that's keeping us longer this evening, I'll, I'll make a, a motion to accept the minutes as written.
And do I have a second on that motion? Thank you, Mr. Chacolo. Uh, Mr. Cussey?
Approved.
Thank you. Ms. Roach?
Approved.
Thank you, and Mr. Tedrow, as the chair, I approve. With that being said, our next meeting is December seventeenth, twenty twenty, at six o'clock PM. As you know, that we changed that in a recently, uh, a recent past meeting, so we are no longer starting at five, we're starting at six, um, so we will see you December seventeenth, twenty twenty, and let things change from then. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Chacolo. Do I have, Mr. Cussey?
Adjourn.
Excellent. Ms. Roach? Ms. Roach? Does this mean we can't adjourn until she...
I'm here.
Until we, I thought we were going to be stuck here forever without you. Uh, and I approve. All right, thank you very much, folks. I really do appreciate all your efforts, really do. I enjoy working with this board. You guys do a great job of keeping me on my toes, and I do appreciate all of your due diligence, uh, and you representing your community very well, and that includes you, Caleb, uh, the director of, um, Comprehensive Permit Services, and Mr. Coyle, really, uh, just genuinely, it's a pleasure to work with all of you, so thank you very much for all those efforts, and have a great night, people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too, Bob. Everybody have a nice Thanksgiving.
Take care.
Take care.